Tuesday, January 30th, please stand for our invocation led by Pastor Sandy McQueen, TruVine Baptist Church, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pray. Our heavenly Father, our heavenly Father, we honor and bless your holy name this day. Come now in the person of your Holy Spirit. Your presence is welcome among this council. Your presence is welcome among these city officials and citizens of this great city. We ask now for your forgiveness of all sins on behalf of our city, our state, our country, and our nation. Help us as we move forward today on One A Card. Help us as called chosen leaders to not be driven with the pride of this world, but allow your ministering angels to give us directions to our mayor, to his staff, to our city council for their districts. Then God may your divine power of love, grace, and wisdom be upon the leaders of our city. We ask for healing of our family members and victims of fallen heroes due to crying violence within our nation. We pray now that this day is the beginning of reasoning, healing, and peace for our world. It is in the name of God the Father, in the name of God the Son, and in the name of God the Holy Spirit I pray. Amen.
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll cough, Vice President Manzi.
Here.
Councilmember Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Small.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Day.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
What happened to see each and every one of you? I'm gonna go over our rules. We're gonna ask that everyone would turn off all of your electronic devices before or upon entering the meeting. Any person desiring to address the council must sign in indicating the resolution. Ordinance, appeal, or public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must state his or her name and address. Any person desiring to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must contact the city clerk's office no later than 2:00 PM on the Thursday prior to the council meeting. The subject he or she wishes to address must be identified and pertain to City of Mobile business. Any person who has not given proper notice to the clerk's office and wishes to speak on a non-agenda item will not be allowed to address the council. All speakers are allowed five minutes to address the council. A bell will sound to indicate the end of four minutes. One minute remains for summarizing. The second bell indicates that your time has expired. When addressing the council, there is to be no personal address to any individual council member. All statements are to be made to me, the chair, who will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain the quorum, there will be no undue applause and/or public outcry allowed.
Approval of minutes of January 23rd.
Some more.
Second.
Probably motion is second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Communications from the mayor.
Mr. Chairman, may we delay those remarks? The mayor's running a few minutes late.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Adoption of the agenda.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is adopted.
Appeals, we have requests for a waiver of the noise ordinance on February 1st, 2nd, 5th, 6th, 7th, 8th, 9th, 12th, 13th, 14th, 15th, and 16th on Costa Rica Street.
This is a public hearing, what we have?
We have for discussion.
This is appeal.
Okay.
Request for waiver of noise ordinance.
Okay. I move. Now, is the person, is that gonna speak, who is appealing this?
I'm not sure if the person is here. Is Ms. Tricia Losae here? Not present.
Okay, well, Madam Clerk, I'm going to oppose this appeal. I'm gonna oppose this appeal because the event, the protest is gonna take place at Strickland Youth Center.
Is that, do you wanna make that a motion?
Yes. Okay, I move motion to deny the appeal.
I'll second. Probably the motion is second in the discussion.
Yes.
Ms. Richardson.
Mr. Vice President, I'm gonna, I'm gonna recommend that we deny the appeal on the grounds that the address, 2315 Costa Rica Street, is at Strickland Youth Center. And the proposal is for them to go down to the youth center, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12 days to use amplification when they speak. There, there's a court down there, juvenile, they hold juvenile court at Strickland Youth Center. And I don't want them out there shouting and screaming through a megaphone or whatever way they're going to be talking to disrupt the court. And I see this as disruptive. Let me say, first of all, I have nothing against protests. The Constitution guarantee us to write a protest. So, but to protest in such a way that you would disrupt the court, I can't, I can't, I don't want us to do that. They still can go down there, they still can make their protest, but, but if we vote, we would give them the power to amplify what they're going to say. I'm against amplifying that on the grounds that it might disrupt the court.
Probably motion is second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All in opposition?
In favor of the motion.
In favor of the motion. All in favor of the motion to deny.
Motion to deny.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's the only.
Then the appeal is denied.
Well, the request is denied.
Today is the appeal of the, of the Mobile City Planning Commission's approval of a planned unit development to allow a new off-site parking lot to accommodate an existing medical clinic, 2001 Spring Hill Avenue, and 137, 139, and 149 Tuscaloosa Street.
Is there anyone here that'd like to speak on behalf of this appeal? Yes, sir.
Good morning. My name is Al Carragüino. I live at 138 Florence Place, Mobile, Alabama 36607. I was at the planning commission meeting back in October when they brought this up. They're gonna put a parking lot in that abuts my property. I put in writing to all members that I objected to this construction that they plan to do. There's a doctor group that bought the building and they're wanting to eliminate a drive, and then they say they're gonna make a parking lot out of all of that property, but it's obvious that they're planning on putting other buildings there of some type. But, like I said, I had approached the planning commission. It got approved, I was never notified that it was approved. I haven't, the first thing I've gotten since the October meeting was the letter for this meeting being appealed. And I wanted to let y'all know that I plan to contact my attorney to see about legal action that I can take to stop this, whether it be an injunction, a lawsuit, or whatever it's gonna take. And that is my thoughts on this project. Thank you.
Can we have Mr. Olson to come? To speak? Oh, we got another one, okay.
Ready.
Could we get your name and address, please?
Yeah, George Brew, 1956 College Court, and, yeah, my property backs up to the proposed parking lot. I live on College Court, which is off Tuscaloosa Street, but my house faces College Court, but behind my house, I own a half acre, and that half acre backs up to the proposed parking lot. And whatever they do, if they, if they just built a parking lot, I would have to contend only with the noise from cars and lights and things like that. But if they do build other, if they put other buildings there, then it's gonna be like I got a whole complex in my backyard. And I requested that they build an eight-foot fence to separate my property from the parking lot property. And, but I have concerns that even that wouldn't give me, you know, privacy. That I, the reason I bought that half acre is because it's kind of an isolated area, and we do astronomy back there, and I have a big garden back there, and it's just like a sanctuary. And if they put a parking lot in there with other buildings, then I'm gonna lose all of that. And I don't know what alternatives are, other than, I was reading about the site at the new grocery store where they're putting an eight-foot concrete wall to divide the, you know, the properties. And I don't know if that's a possibility, but at any rate, my concern is, you know, the property value going down the sanctuary of the half acre that I own, which, you know, backs straight up to the parking lot area.
Yes, sir. Mr. Richardson.
When, when you mentioned the eight-foot concrete wall, are you talking about at Publix?
Yes, yes.
That's not true.
Oh, it's not?
No.
They didn't build it?
No, no, it's not gonna be a concrete wall anywhere.
Oh, I thought I read where.
No.
Oh, okay. Okay, well, at, at any rate, if there was a wall, you know, there, it wouldn't, you know, if this, if this thing did pass, if there was a, I had requested a eight-foot fence with a row of, like, thuya trees, the high evergreen trees that would block some of the noise and lighting coming in to my, because that, there's a street that runs in, a little side street that runs off of Spring Hill Avenue coming into the parking lot. And those lights come right towards my house, and I have two big stained glass, I mean, plate glasses that I put in a couple of years ago, and they look right into that street. So I would get all that traffic coming right into my, my house. And I, if, if an eight-foot wall was there, it would definitely help. And I don't know about, you know, you say there wasn't a, I don't, I mean, they do build eight-foot, like, concrete block walls around in places, don't they?
City can retire, the city can't require that.
Oh, they can't require that? Yeah. So the best they could do is require an eight-foot privacy fence?
I'm, I'm going to amend this to add that.
Okay.
When we get to it.
I have a question, if I may ask the...
Mrs. Rich?
Did you get notice about the December 21st meeting?
No.
And is he more than 300 feet?
It was a holdover, and we cannot send a notification for holdovers. This announcement is made...
Oh, I see. So it was first heard in October and held over. How many times was it held over?
Two different times, I believe.
Did you come to the October, the original October meeting?
Yes.
Did you get notices?
Yes.
Got notice for that?
Yes.
And you did come down and address?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Any, any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
And if I could comment on a planned unit development, which this is, if I'm correct, then the city can require a type of fence.
Right.
Or wall, masonry, yes, that is allowed, if it's, it's not something, it, I know it was spoken that we're not allowed to, but on a pud, we can.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Dorothy I. Wells. I have lived on, at 134 Florence Place for the past 40 years. I own my home, I've taken care of it, and I take pride in my neighborhood. I got this letter about Pulmonary Associates of Mobile wanting to turn 137 Tuscaloosa Street into a paved parking lot. On this property, which abuts my backyard, both properties abut each other's yards. And on this property, there are gigantic beautiful trees. Moreover, there is a 1835 historical home. It used to be called the Amelia Stewart House, also the Carol O. Wilkerson and William Hallett House, and it has been placed on the National Registry of Historic Places here in Mobile. And they're wanting to cut this down, even got an award for the Greek architecture significance. Getting back to this paved parking lot. My property is on this land, as a contractor told me. We have runoff, water runoff, storm runoff during heavy rains, which we've had plenty of, and I was always wondering why Florence Place would just be like a river, it would go over the sidewalks. And that is why. Now, if they put this concrete parking lot, destroy this 1835 home, cut down these trees, and you have concrete, it's gonna turn it into a waterfall towards my backyard. And that disturbs me, and it could decrease also the home property values of everybody on that street. Also, another reason why I object is that, about the storm, I'm really concerned about that, depreciation of property values, the noise from the people at Pulmonary Associates of Mobile, the patients, talking. They would lock their cars, you would hear noises there. Alarms going off. Sounds from the vehicles, also fumes. And then I'm gonna have a wonderful dumpster practically in my own backyard, which could attract rats, rodents, and also unwanted visitors. A fast exit to get away from somebody running after them if they committed a crime or robbery or anything at Pulmonary Associates of Mobile, a fastest exit would be down my property, which would be a safety hazard. And also, this would be also a health hazard too, with this dumpster, and then fumes from people smoking. And, and another reason is that traffic on Spring Hill Avenue would be atrocious. At 8:00 in the morning, I work at USA Medical Center, and I work at night, and that's why this would disrupt my sleep even during the day. There's so much traffic at about 8:00. With this, it's gonna deter traffic, it's gonna be congested. Also, this is a B-1 now, and I have three pages what a B-1 could be. And so who's to say that if they perch, if they turn it into a parking lot or clear all the trees, then they change their mind and they want something else? They want a, a woman's home or homeless people and children. That's on this list. There's a lot of undesirables that I would not want at my backyard. And then also Carol Wilkerson, in 1990, she changed her mind. She had it a B-1 for a counseling center, and she never went through with it. Then she went back to court, went back to the planning commission, and I was there in 1992, and she wanted a B-2, she wanted to turn it into a reception hall. So just because it's, they want a parking lot, doesn't mean that they're not gonna want something else later on. They got their foot in the door. And then also, the B-1 could turn into a B-2. That could be a gas station, not saying that they would have a gas station. It could be a bar, not saying that they would want a bar, but it's just that you can trust what will happen in the future. And Florence Place is such a quaint, homes were built in 19, in the early 1950s. Like, mine was built in 1953. Each one had a, each home had a live oak tree on the right-hand side of their property as they go out the front of the door. And it's beautiful, it's canopy with oak trees. And this would disrupt the neighborhood, depreciating property values. Am I ready?
I'm gonna ask that you, that you summarize at this point.
Okay.
Your time really has expired.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I pray that you will do the right thing and object to this. My life, I'm 74 years old. And I want peace at, at the latter part of my life. I don't want disruption. This is causing disruption for me and other people in the street. I was there first. Let us live in peace without this disruption.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Rich?
I have a question for you.
Yes.
Ms. Wells? Ms. Wells, you know that the house of concern, 137, is a business. It is a business, B-1, it's, okay. What would you like to see on that property?
What would be nice for that, for the home to be fixed up?
Nobody gonna live there. It's, it's not R-1, it's big, it's a business. If they're gonna fix it up, they're gonna open some sort of business in it. What business would you like to see there?
Could they live in a, a B-1 district?
Nobody gonna live there, it's B-1.
Oh, you can't.
It's B-1. It's gotta be R, R-1, 2, 3, R is residential, B is business. It's a business. So you named what you didn't like, so what, what would you like to see?
I also question that B, B-1.
It's a business. What business would you like to see in that, at that location?
I would have to think about it, I don't know. But I don't like how I'm feeling right now.
But it seems to me that a parking lot won't threaten anybody. They could put a homeless shelter, I'm saying, you, you fight a parking lot, they're not putting, they're not trying to put no building in there and open up nothing else that would bring undesirables in your neighborhood. It's a parking lot, that's all they're trying to do. So if you fight the parking lot, you probably gonna end up getting something you don't want, 'cause they don't have no other choice. It's a business. The trouble is, is that the people on Tuscaloosa Street sat there and let them convert a R-1 into a B-1. And once you did that, you're opening floodgates. They just trying to get a parking lot.
I want, I want to mention, if I can, I question that B-1 zoning, because I never got a notice for that.
It's already, I'm through. You can't change that.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Wells.
Okay.
We'll now hear from Mr. Olson. As he's coming, I'd like to recognize SGA from Callaway Smith Middle School and their sponsor, Ms. Stephanie Lucas of Callaway Smith, is one of our premier middle schools in the Mobile County Public School System, and it just happens to be in District 2. Happy to have you all. Will you all please stand?
Ms. Lucas is also a former Mardi Gras queen also.
Wonderful. And I hope you all can stay just long enough to get a picture, if you don't mind. Thank you. Mr. Olson.
Yes, sir. Mr. Manzi, City Council. The proposal is for a parking lot. There are no buildings proposed with this development. Excuse me. The majority of the trees on site are being saved. They are specifically shown on the site plan that it was approved by the planning commission as being saved. A planning commission approval for a PUD is site plan specific, subject to the addition of any conditions that they place on that approval. So the concerns about there being further development of the site are not applicable here. For there to be any change to this proposed development, it would have to go back through the planning commission. So again, what's being proposed is a parking lot. The site plan, as approved, does reflect a six-foot privacy fence. One of the additional conditions that the planning commission placed on this approval was that the lighting of the parking lot be designed to comply with dark sky requirements, which basically means that there's no bleed from the lights onto the residential properties. They are masked so that everything, or shielded so that everything goes down to the parking lot, within the confines of the parking lot, and that it does not illuminate the sky as we see many parking lots, especially older ones do. So as far as that type of impact on the neighborhood, it should be very minimal. With regard to the dumpster, that dumpster is at least 45 to 50 feet from the rear property line of this site, so it is a significant distance away from the properties that face Florence Place. I'm not sure, do you have any further questions?
Yes. Thank you. One of the concerns, and I have a concern about this too, it's about the house that possibly was built in 1835. I know it's B-1, but I want to know, is it possible that some historic organization can move this house and restore it because of its historic integrity?
I do know that there have, there's been contact by a couple of individuals with historic development regarding the possibility of moving this house to another location. I'm not sure if they have contacted the applicant. The applicant's representative, Mr. Smith, is here. He might be able to address that for you, but I do know that that contact has initially been made with historic development.
Okay.
I have a question.
Or Mr. Olson?
On the six-foot privacy fence, is that just where it abuts the R-1 right now?
Yes, ma'am.
And that is the conditioned place?
Right, and it's, there is an existing privacy fence along the north property line, which abuts the driveway, if you will, that goes into the former Rite Aid property that's also shared by the doctor's office. But the site plan does reflect a six-foot privacy fence along the west or rear property line and the south property line where it abuts residential.
But, Ms. President, I'm, I'm going to offer an amendment that wherever B-1 abuts R-1, that there be an eight-feet-high buffer.
I, I don't think the applicant would be adverse to that, but as I said, the applicant's representative is here, y'all may have some questions for him.
Mr. Olson, one question. The resident had a question, or she had a concern right about flooding. And I'm looking at the proposed parking lot, and I see that we do have the detention pond. My question is that I don't see any catch basins or storm drainage, which I'm sure that this parking lot does have, proposed parking lot does have, but how many is it?
Do you know, right? That's a question that the representative will, should be able to answer, but normally when somebody is going through this process of going to the planning commission, they have not designed their full drainage system at that point, because that is a significant expense. They want to make sure that they are able to do the project before they expend that amount of money. They will have to comply with the city engineering floodplain ordinance, which requires that water not be able to leave the property to any greater extent or any faster than it does pre-development. does pre-development. So that is going to be reviewed by engineering. But as I said, Mr. Smith is here and should be able to address that.
Thank you so much.
I have one quick question.
Mrs. Rich.
As long as he's still standing there. Was there any discussion about a masonry type of wall where it abuts residential?
I do not recall that. I think there was a request for the eight-foot privacy fence. But if I recall correctly, the provision of the dark sky requirement was why that wasn't added as a condition. But that's going by memory, I'm not always 100% correct.
Does the city come out and monitor that if there are complaints, that the residents say it is bleeding over, it is disruptive?
We will go out and check with a light meter. But they have to provide, as per the condition, their photometric plan illustrating how it's going to comply. And that will be reviewed by the city electrical inspectors before the issuance of the permit.
And into the future then too, it would have to.
Yes, ma'am.
It's just not to get the CO.
Correct.
And then, do we know the operating hours of the clinic that's on site? Or is there any change to happen? I guess the applicant might be able to give us some.
Yes, ma'am, that's more information that the applicant would be able to provide.
Right, but that wasn't discussed?
No, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Vice President.
Ms. Gregory.
Mrs. Rich's question about the operating hours was something that I also was curious about because you're talking about lights for a parking lot for a doctor's office. I can see in the winter months when the sun sets a little early, 5 o'clock or so it starts getting dark. But will the lights be on throughout the night?
No, that is not the plan. The plan is that the lights only be on during the time that the parking lot is in use. And as you said, normally, normal business hours for a doctor's office, the only time that would be, an issue would be during the winter months.
Otherwise, they should be off and it shouldn't impact the people who live next to it.
Correct.
But that's not a requirement, that was not put on to the PUD, was it? As I don't see it listed, talking about hours of operation.
Right, but I think that was the intent.
Well, we may need to have that specifically put in there because sometimes intent and what requirements are two different things.
I understand. It's always better to be more specific.
That may be something that we wanted to add, Mr. Richardson, as you provide an amendment.
Yes, yes.
Any further questions for Mr. Olson?
Thanks.
Did we want to hear from the owner's representative?
Yes, yes.
The applicant, yeah, sure.
The applicant's representative, sure.
How are y'all doing? My name's Larry Smith, I'm with SC Civil, I'm the civil engineer on the project. My address is 968 Whittier Street. Kind of hit a couple of the points I've heard so far. We are not opposed to putting in an eight-foot privacy fence. My concern with the block wall would be, we have already actually done the drainage calculations and we are receiving runoff from the adjacent property into our detention pond. If we put a masonry wall up, we're gonna be impeding that flow. Wood privacy fence will allow that flow to come across. The runoff from our site is captured by two inlets and is carried to that detention pond. And that detention pond is routed back to Tuscaloosa Street. So we will not be sending our runoff across the residential properties. It will all be contained on site and we're actually accepting some runoff from the adjacent residential properties onto ours. And then it will tie into the existing storm system along Tuscaloosa. We, I've notified the electrical engineer that's doing the site lighting about the dark sky requirement and he is complying with that. And I have not seen the timer schedule yet, I haven't gotten the site lighting plans. But yes, the doctor's office is closed at 5 o'clock, it's a Monday through Friday operation. It's just like every, I mean, there's several pulmonary associates around Mobile already, I think they have about seven different offices. I might be off a little bit on that. So I don't think putting them on a timer would be an issue. They would of course have to extend it past 5 o'clock because the doctors don't necessarily walk out the door and punch a clock at 5. But it would not have to go until the wee hours of the night. And for some odd reason, they might have to put an override on in case the doctor's working late just for safety concerns or any of the staff. As Mr. Olson pointed out, yes, we are trying to save several of the trees on the property. There are some very nice trees and we are working around those. If you look at the parking lot, you can kind of see, we chopped it up. We wanted to be a good steward in that sense. As far as the house goes, no one has contacted me personally, but they could have contacted the owner and I'll ask that question, if anybody's contacted them from the Historical Preservation Society about possibly relocating the house.
Any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, on the fence.
Yes, sir.
My motion is going to be that there'll be an eight-feet opaque fence, meaning you can't see through it. I don't want the people to be able to see what's going on over there. So if you put up some sort of wide fence, they can see through it. I'm gonna say an eight-feet opaque fence be installed where R1 abuts, where B1 abuts R1.
Would a wood privacy fence?
Yes, oh, yes, yes.
Then we'll be fine with that.
And I'm gonna also say that at closing, parking lot, parking lights of the parking lot be cut off. At close, when you close, cut the parking lot lights off so the folk won't have to see it, at closing.
At close of business or when the workers, after the workers leave?
When you lock the door.
Okay. And then also just kind of want to give y'all a quick rundown of the history of why pulmonary associates felt the need to purchase this property. They purchased the old pain clinic there at the corner of Tuscaloosa that's been vacant. Also, you know, the old Rite Aid is also sitting there vacant. Well, the old pain clinic had a parking lot and access agreement between the office and the Rite Aid. That is set to expire in about two years. We approached the current landowners that they would like to extend it and they do not want to put any more burden on the property because they're trying to sell it. So they would not commit to extending that parking lot easement. So in about two years, they have no parking, other than the, I think, five parking spaces sitting up front. And they would be non-compliant, they wouldn't be able to pull any type of building permit. So that's why they purchased the property by its own B1, to put this parking lot on it. There are no plans for a building, that's why we had to come in for a PUD because you cannot put a parking lot as a standalone entity on a site without the PUD. And that's why we came forward.
I have a question.
Mr. Davis.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Davis.
Yeah, I think, I would just suggest that, you know, when they, I think they need a little extra time between when they close, when they lock the door to people coming in and the lights go off. Because as it's been pointed out, the people who work in the building, you know, they're gonna be there after 5 o'clock and they, and I don't want them to have to be walking out to their cars into a dark parking lot. So, you know, an hour or something like that, do you think an hour would be okay past the...
Honestly, I don't know their operating procedures, but...
An hour or so I would think after the closing time would be sufficient. And then you say there's a manual override.
Yeah.
So, you know, let's give them, I would just ask Mr. Richardson if we couldn't give them until 6 o'clock and then if they need a manual override, they could do it. But I want to, I want to make sure that the people who work in the building can get safely to their vehicles in the winter months.
Yes, sir. Mr. Richardson.
My point would be, as long as someone is in the building, when the building is closed for the day and nobody else is coming in and out, cut the parking lot. I'm not talking about that closed an hour, 5 o'clock. When you have closed that building for the day, there's no more activity in the building, cut the lights off.
Yes, sir.
Question.
Mrs. Rich?
Do you have a timeline for this development?
They were hoping to have already gotten started by now, so they're ready to go.
So it's not like they're waiting to see what happens on that parcel next door, if there's any interest to sell. This is gonna transpire.
Yes, ma'am. They have been pretty much told that the agreement's not gonna be extended. They have a contract, someone has a contract on the Rite Aid property. At least as of four weeks ago, last time I talked to a client.
I just, when you talked about the other initiative, I wanted to make sure that it's not something that this will keep moving a timeline out.
No, they're ready to break ground. That's why we've already completed our civil design. We've already tried to submit.
I thought so too, in listening.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll ask our attorney, can we put a timeline on the PUD for development so that people know that everything needs to be completed on PUDs? Like a 24-month, you know, something that's generous allows them.
I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm not sure what you mean by a timeline.
When you create a PUD, can we make sure that the development has like a end timing to it so that the work is completed within a certain amount of time?
That the construction to be completed within a time certain.
I think there's already a one-year PUD suspension, Richard?
Yeah, the permit will expire by its own terms if the building isn't begun.
I believe so as well, but I was looking for...
At some point, it might be a year.
Mr. Olson, I think they were seeking your guidance relative to a timeline on the PUD. Right. Is it a one-year timeline?
Yes, sir. The court has not been done within a year.
One year.
One year?
Yes.
Any further questions?
Okay, okay.
I'm sorry, sir, your time has elapsed. I'm so sorry, your time has elapsed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any further discussion?
Okay, I would like to offer an amended motion for this appeal.
Usually the appellant has an opportunity to revise.
They do.
Yes.
Well, yes, sir, come on then, I'm sorry.
No, but he's not...
He's in favor of the...
Well, either way, come on down, sir.
My question on the privacy fence, can it be a board-on-board fence which provides a little more privacy?
Yes, that's what it's gonna be.
Yeah, board-on-board, that's all.
I move to approve or accept the appeal.
Second.
Probably motion and second and a discussion.
Yes, I would like to amend the motion. I'd like to amend the motion for the lights in the parking lot to be turned off when the office is closed for the day. And that eight-feet opaque buffer be installed.
A wood.
A wooden privacy fence. That a wooden privacy fence be installed where B1 abuts R1.
Let's take Mr. Richardson's amendment. All those in favor of the amendment?
I have a question. The original motion was what?
You want to deny the appeal, correct?
No, to accept the appeal. We have to accept the appeal, which is to, which is to change the opinion of the planning commission. We are essentially gonna change it, but it'll be revised by Mr. [inaudible]. I'm looking at Ms. Cochran.
Well, in concept, I don't have any problem with you doing it that way. But there's gonna have to be more to the amendment than just adding a fence. It's gonna have to reinstate all of the planning commission conditions. In other words, you're gonna have to approve the planning of development, add all the conditions, and then swap that one so it...
It changes.
It's gonna need some...
So our get to say is that we're gonna approve all planning commission recommendations?
You don't have to make this decision right now.
I, if, I think we need to have some breathing space around this, if that's all right. Would it be all right if we pushed it for a week to make sure we get it right?
I withdraw my motion.
Much less for one week.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed?
Sorry.
No, it's fine. And just for everybody, Mr. Chairman, if you will.
Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
There's, I know, I see some puzzled looks on, you probably see them on our faces as well. We want to make sure we get this decision right. I think everybody's in agreement, we're gonna, we're gonna come up with an eight-foot fence and there's gonna be some limit to when that lighting can be there and what it looks like. So there's a little bit of give and take and we're just gonna make sure that the legal language is sufficient so that it's enforceable and that the applicant also knows what is expected of them. So we're gonna make that decision next week in our regular scheduled meeting. Thank you.
Madam City Clerk?
Public hearings today is a public hearing to determine if structures at 2783 Hayes Avenue, 324 Burton Avenue, 2355 Bullin Street and 202 Abrams Streets are public nuisances in ordering them repaired or demolished.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak to any of the addresses just called in this public hearing? If not, the public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chair, when we get to those public hearings, the resolutions for those, those will need to be tabled. They were cited under the old ordinance and they need to be resited, so we'll need to table those.
Yes, ma'am.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, David Smith.
Madam City Clerk, just before we get to that part, I realize that these middle schools might have to get back to school. I'm gonna ask if we could get that picture now and then proceed with the presentation.
Bring them up here?
Yes, sir.
They want to come behind us?
Right. I'm so honored to have them here.
I think...
From Callaway Smith Middle School.
Hey guys, we need to stay seated just a little longer.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, we should have discussed that a little bit.
Oh, you got stickers, huh? Thanks for joining us.
I got one gone in this year. They're mostly two of them. I haven't... You asked for it. It's me. It's all you want.
There. Getting some picture.
Your flash didn't go off.
It's so bright over there and it's so dark over here. Yeah, I just think it's too bright over there.
Okay.
I think you have enough light.
Just let it go.
It's nice.
Too much light on.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks for joining us. Nice to come. Thank you. Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, David Smith.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is David Smith. I live at 6861 Greenway Drive South, Mobile, Alabama, 36608. As a group of concerned Mobile citizens, we are petitioning the city of Mobile to work with us and adopt a non-discriminatory policy for all Mardi Gras and other parading organizations. We desire to work together to ensure a Mardi Gras experience in the city of Mobile that all citizens can participate in and be proud of. For well over a century, the Comedy Cowboy Organization...
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, David Smith.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is David Smith. I live at 6861 Greenway Drive South, Mobile, Alabama, 36608. As a group of concerned Mobile citizens, we are petitioning the city of Mobile to work with us and adopt a non-discriminatory policy for all Mardi Gras and other parading organizations. We desire to work together to ensure a Mardi Gras experience in the city of Mobile that all citizens can participate in and be proud of. For well over a century, the Comic Cowboy organization has delivered political and social commentary on the floats within their 10-unit Mardi Gras parade. Although many of these floats, the signage is humorous, and the organization's motto, quote, "Without malice," the effect has been unfortunately been hurtful over the years. Many Mobile citizens have found certain signs to be offensive and derogatory based upon racial, gender, national origin, and other offensive reasons. Last year, the organization again faced accusations that some of their messages were racially charged and had crossed the line of acceptability. As a result of the disruption and the negative light shed on the city, the mayor and a city council member appropriately resigned from the Comic Cowboys organization. The Comic Cowboy organization, in a letter, promised, quote, "Our future paraders, our future parades will take everyone's feelings into consideration. There was no racial intent to create division in our city, and of course, our comments are, again, without malice," end quote. For the 2018 Mardi Gras season, we, concerned citizens of Mobile, seek further actions from the mayor and the city council and the Mobile Carnival Association to ensure that the members of the Comic Cowboy organization adhere to their written promises made in last year's letter. The Mobile City Council is not powerless in this matter and can take steps to ensure a balanced compromise that will uphold the First Amendment, yet preserve the spirit and decency and the grace that the city is known for. Because city funds are spent and city personnel are paid to support the conduct of the Mardi Gras, the city bears a moral and arguably a legal responsibility to monitor what is allowed in public space. Concerned citizens of Mobile present, presented to the mayor and the city council a proposal concerning an ordinance stating that no Mardi Gras association or other parading organization-society should receive funding permits from the city unless it assures that the city has, has a provision in its charter, its bylaws, its rules, regulations, or policies requiring that its activities shall be conducted within regards to race, color, creed, religion, gender, sexual orientation, national origin, or ancestry. And is, it is, the publicity signage is not intended to nor reasonably have effect on creating a hostile environment. We ask all of, all of us to join together to ensure that not only this, this year's Comic Cowboy parade proceeds without insult or incident, but that there be secure policies and procedures that would ensure this form of harassment, well, not harassment, I'm sorry, embarrassment for the city of Mobile and its citizens never happens again. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time and consideration in this matter.
Mr. Smith, we are in receipt of both your letter and also the accompanying ordinance from our sister city, New Orleans. That has been forwarded over to our council attorney, and at this time going to ask that she might offer any commentary that she'd want to offer.
First, I want to say that, thank you for coming, and I appreciate the good work that went into your memo. It's very well thought out. It seeks to strike a balance, which is welcome news. I also have to tell you that I didn't spend a lot of time with the New Orleans ordinance. I read through it a couple of times, and I don't see the connection between the ordinance that was submitted and the relief that you're asking for. What I read in the New Orleans ordinance is the city of New Orleans has a human rights commission. They also have laws that prohibit discrimination in public accommodations, and in order to escape being fined under the public accommodations law, if you register as a private organization and there's a lot of proof about how you qualify to be private, then you are allowed to discriminate without fear of violating New Orleans's ordinance. Now, I could be missing something, but I did not see a provision that prohibited private organizations from parading, and in fact, I found in another section of the New Orleans code, specific authority for political speech parades. And I'm not going to tell you how important the First Amendment is because I think you already know that. So I guess I'm curious, I don't think the question can be answered here, not without further study, but I did have one question. Have you been to New Orleans? Have you met with groups over there? I'm trying to figure out how this, is the theory that the parade a, a public event, public-sponsored event? I mean, I'm.
Ms. Cochran.
Yeah.
In light of the fact that you don't have all you need in order to really proffer to us any further guidance, I'm going to ask if Ms. Nguyen, if you could share your contact information with Ms. Cochran.
Yeah.
And Ms. Cochran, share yours with her, and you all interface and just get back to the council as a whole with what you come up with.
Sure.
Thank you all. Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I don't think the intent was to mimic the, what was written with New Orleans. I think it's a roadmap that kind of reflects where the city actually made some sort of overt attempt to reconcile, you know, the differences. And so I think further dialogue would be appreciated.
All right, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
CIP, CIP resolutions held over. 21050, authorized contract amendment with Constantine Engineering for program management. Capital Improvement Projects, various city of Mobile facility locations.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes.
21051, authorized contract with ICA Construction Corporation for Hillsdale Park and Medal of Honor Park, field condition improvements.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes.
Resolutions held over. 01052, authorized agreement with the state of Alabama for transportation alternative project sidewalks along Airport Boulevard from West of Regency Subdivision to Hillcrest Road.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
A couple of weeks ago, we sent over the funds to be the match on this program, and as was stated at our pre-council meeting, this was, actually fell in the lap because another city was unable to make their match. My office had applied using discretionary funds, getting the engineering plans for the sidewalk links to go west of Regency all the way to Hillcrest. There are some sidewalks, there are many links missing, and I look forward to this amenity coming because people would appreciate being able to walk and perhaps get out of their cars to go to the commercial corridors from their homes. So this is, will be a safe alternative of using sidewalks and filling in the ones that are missing. Thank you.
It's been probably motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes.
09053, we allocate monies from Capro Project Parks, Mardi Gras Park, to performance contract Village of Spring Hill.
So moved.
Second.
Probably motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes.
21054, authorized contract with Jay Hunt Enterprises, general contractor for Taylor Park Site Drainage Repairs and Walking Trail.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I'm Brother Chairman.
Mrs. Small?
This is a great project and a long-time coming project in District 3 at the Taylor Park, also known as Baltimore Park on Baltimore Street. This project was first funded by a community block developer grant money and to put down a walking trail at Taylor Park, and about to go ahead and start working on it, find out that we had several drainage issues. So I'm glad that the administration and also Mr. Roberts had got together and to work this out, that we can go ahead and put down a walking trail for the citizens in the Odell Community. And again, this will be a great project for the Odell Community area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Small. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes.
21055, authorized contract with Neil Schaefer for right-of-way acquisition services from McGregor Avenue widening from Airport Boulevard to Dolphin Street.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes.
Ordinance is being introduced for the first time, 34003.
By council rules, this ordinance would live for one week.
Consent resolutions being introduced for the first time, 4057 through 40060.
Motion to suspend rules for immediate consideration of resolutions, 40, I mean, 40057 through 40060.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
4057 through 40060.
Table these.
Right.
It moves to table.
Second.
Probably motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Items are tabled.
CIP resolutions being introduced for the first time, 13061 through 21063.
By council rules, these three resolutions would live for one week.
I think that the rest of the resolution that's being introduced probably ought to be a consent resolution. There's no match.
31066.
I would ask that be called out. Any other who get up?
Okay.
Resolution's being introduced for the first time, 09064 through 31066.
Motion to suspend rules for immediate consideration of 31066 and other two would live for one week by council rules.
Second. Probably motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
31066, authorized mayor to accept and receive the ALEA Fiscal Year 2017 Homeland Security Grant Program, no local match.
So moved. Probably motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes.
Announcements, the February 13th, city council meeting will be held on Wednesday, February 14th. And at this time, I think we have an announcement for the council to move into an executive session.
We have.
The motion will be to move. To enter executive session to discuss litigation. I've previously supplied Ms. Carol with an opinion that it's appropriate for you to meet. There will be no need for you to return to this room, so once you're briefed on the litigation, you can adjourn upstairs.
This is regarding the solid waste authority litigation.
Can we do announcements prior to the?
Yes.
Okay. Let's start with.
Someone.
Pardon?
Will you make the, you're going to make the motion, or are you going to wait to the end?
Okay. Mr. Nguyen?
Okay.
I think I'm just going to wait till next week. I asked that everybody just observe what the guidance has been given to us by MPD. We've had a great Mardi Gras so far, and I think it will continue to be, and hats off to the folks at the Senior Bowl. It is a, it's always a great event to have those folks here, and it was my pleasure, pleasure to participate. Thank you.
Mrs. Gregory?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Also, kudos to everyone with the Senior Bowl. It was a great game, great week, as always, and a lot of people came out for the game, even though the weather was iffy. Thankfully, it did hold off for the game. We only got some sprinkles, so that wasn't too bad. Anyway, great game, thanks to everybody. I do want to let everybody know that the annual Hillsdale Community Center Mardi Gras Gene and Bling will be going on again. This is February 9th. It will be from 10 o'clock until 2 o'clock at the Hillsdale Community Center. Everyone is invited to come. They have a great turnout from people throughout the community and lots of floats, and so it's something that I've done every year and intend to be there again. But again, this is February 9th, from 10 until 2 at the Hillsdale Community Center. It is the Hillsdale Community Center Gene and Bling Mardi Gras Parade. Also, coming up February 27th, will be my district meeting at the Vision Center. It's at the corner of Forest Hill Drive and Princeton Woods Drive. We will have a number of guest speakers, but the focus will be on the widening of Ziegler, which as you all know is finally coming along, Project Shield, and also the latest on our CIP, the capital improvement projects in the district. And everyone is invited. Postcards will be going out soon, and that's it, Mr. Vice President.
Mr. Small?
Thank you, Vice President Manzi. Just like to tell the citizens that in the next couple of weeks, I will be announcing our spring district wide meeting. Any citizen have any particular topic that you'd like to cover, please email me at cj. small@cityofmobile.org, or you can call 208-7441. Again, in the next couple of weeks, I will be making the announcement of the date and time of our spring district-wide meeting. Thank you, Vice President Manzi.
Mrs. Rich?
Thank you very much. Again, I would like to ask the administration to please acknowledge the fact that the, my office is trying to get a meeting together that deals with the Hillcrest corridor between Greelot and Cottage Hill. The traffic management access program needs to move forward in a manner that is acceptable to the community, and I would like residents along that corridor and businesses to attend a meeting with the city professionals and the consultant like we did back in March when it was first rolled out. So I'm looking forward to that. The meeting is tentatively scheduled for February 22nd at 6:30 PM, and I, again, need to send out postcards, and time is of the essence to get that information out to the citizens. So I really hope that I'll get the confirmation of those in attendance at that meeting from the city staff. Thank you very much.
Mr. Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to say we've heard today on two great projects for District 1. We're going to have equipment upgrades at Aaron Park and at Trinity Gardens Park. We've heard on that today. Expect that to be coming your way real soon in terms of equipment that is going to be at that park. I would just like to make one mention of Publix because I have been mentioned on the air. You're going to probably hear more today about that. What's happening at Publix is we have a legal issue dealing with South Eddington. I believe Ms. Thompson is in a meeting right now dealing with that. I don't know how they're going to come out. The issue is, and the mind and heart of so many people, where is Fred? What does his stand on all of this? I stand with what's legal. We make the laws down here, and I can't find myself outside of the law. Whatever the law says, that's what I support. I'm not an outlaw. It's not clear at this moment with everybody what the law says, but whenever it's all figured out, I will be on the side of the law every time. Thank you.
Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Today, we passed a resolution awarding a contract to begin. Today, we passed a resolution awarding a contract to begin right-of-way acquisition on our important infrastructure project along McGregor Avenue from Dolphin Street down to Airport Boulevard. This project, largely financed by federal money, has been on the books for some time, and we're finally getting to the point, after much discussion, much planning, much engineering, that we can begin the necessary right-of-way acquisition. When this project is completed, it's going to correct many of the deficiencies of that section of road, which is heavily traveled by almost all of our citizens every single day. And I'm looking forward to that project. It's not, they're not going to be bulldozers out there tomorrow afternoon. We've still got a long way to go, but this is the beginning, and every, every long trip begins with the first step. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. I want to start my announcements or any commentary by acknowledging the passing of two great Mobiliens over the last few days. First, Mrs. Luberta Westry Candy Portis, longtime instructor, longtime educator, longtime community advocate. Funeral services were held on the twenty-ninth, and she will certainly be missed by many in the greater Mobile community. And also of my next door neighbor, Mr. Vernon Simpson. For many years, the citizens on Selma Street did not have to have a security system because Mr. Simpson was the eyes and ears of Selma Street. He passed on Monday. We've sent our condolences to his beautiful wife, Ms. Juanita Nicholson Simpson, to the entire family, and to any and all families that are going through hours of bereavement. I want to acknowledge the hard work of Ms. Anitra Bell Henderson. Yesterday, the mayor along with Ms. Henderson kicked off the second iteration of our YES program. I'm essentially, especially proud of that program because it's one that I called for a couple of years ago, and the mayor responded to that call in a very positive and proactive way. And I'm hopeful that hundreds of young people who probably would not have had gainful employment during the summertime will have it as a result of that effort. So I want to publicly acknowledge her hard work, along with the administration in seeing that program continue to flourish. That concludes my announcements, and at this time, I make a motion that we convene into executive session to discuss threatening and pending litigation, and at that time, we will not reconvene.
I so move.
Second.
Motion in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.